Good evening, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, and Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next up is approval of the minutes from previous meeting of October 2nd and the public hearing from October 9th. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron. Are there any additions to the minute, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approvals, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, those minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Mayor.
We have two, uh, two activities in this portion. The first is swearing in of our new deputy city clerk, and that'll be done by Charlie Smythe.
Aye.
Aye. Wendy Ammons.
To solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the position of deputy for the city of Urbana, in the county of Champaign, Illinois, and will do the best, and will do the best of my ability to protect and defend the constitutional laws of the United States, the state of Illinois, and the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana. Acting likely to the city of Urbana.
And, uh, next up, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Amy Felty, please come forward.
This is a proclamation by the mayors of the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois. Whereas, October 22nd, 2017 marks the 200th anniversary of the birth of Baha'u'lla, the founder of the Baha'i faith, and whereas, the first known mention of the Baha'i faith in Champaign County was in 1909 with the local Baha'i community, beginning shortly thereafter through the efforts of Mr. Albert Ross Vale, a Unitarian minister, Mrs. George Bucy, and several University of Illinois professors and their wives. And whereas, a Baha'i youth group at the university, established by 1927 to become the first recognized Baha'i college club in America in 1937, found the Baha'i teachings on race unity so important that they invited Mr. Louis Gregory, a lawyer and son of former slaves, to speak at the Race Amity Conference on campus in 1928, and to give 11 talks on race relations to university sociology classes. And whereas, the Bucy home at 503 West Elm Street, Urbana, became the first permanent Baha'i center in the area, and a beloved gathering place for many decades through which the Baha'is of Champaign County began serving the community through cooperative endeavors, other social and religious groups in matters of race relations, peace advocacy, child education, and interfaith activities. And whereas, the teachings of Baha'u'lla call for fellowship and collaboration among all people, proclaiming that humanity is one family, affirming the equality of women and men, and declaring the need to eliminate all prejudices. And whereas, Baha'u'lla declared that universal education and the independent investigation of truth are two principles upon which a system of collective security can be established to create world peace. Now, therefore, we, Deborah Frank Finan, mayor of the city of Champaign, and Diane Wolf Marlin, mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 22nd, 2017, as bicentenary of the birth of Baha'u'lla, and urge all to resolve on this day to promote in themselves and in their relations with others those qualities and attributes that will help bring about the recognition of the oneness of humanity, to embrace diversity, and to work for unity in our local communities, our country, and our world. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll get to the official.
Okay, next on the item is, um, public input. We will have, I have three, uh, three comments, and then we'll have a presentation on UC2B. First up is Carletta Donaldson.
Good evening. I found out some good information today about a new business that will be grand opening or ribbon cutting on October 28th at noon. It is a sustainable African-American owned business, I believe the first African-American funeral home business in Urbana. We've asked for minority owned businesses, and now we have it, and one that's sustainable. I'm happy, as have, as are many Urbana and Champaign residents are, for the tax benefit I'm hoping that the city will receive, as well as the professionalism that Leeken Sun's Funeral Home has already exhibit, exhibited, excuse me, in our community thus far, as well as their personalized service to the families and communities that they serve. Again, we've asked for this, and this is not an advertisement, just an announcement. My understanding is that they have contacted members of the city council already, and the city of Urbana, and as always, it's a sign of great things here in Urbana, and more to come. Now, I'm not sure if there are any tax breaks or incentives that were given to this business, but hopefully, if they are qualified or have qualified, I'm hoping that we, as a city, will give them our utmost support and diligence in helping them to obtain such benefits. Um, to some of you, I guess it's welcome to the board. I did see you on television this evening, and I pretty much do agree with what you said, so I appreciate that. Bad people will still do bad things, no matter what is in place or whatever the law is, so. So again, hopefully, on October 28th, and I am aware, as a loyal Fighting Illini fan, that that is U of I homecoming, there's a football game, but for some of you that don't go to the games and are interested in just welcoming this business to our community, I hope to see you out there.
Thank you, Carletta.
Thank you.
We have a sheet from Bishop King James Underwood. He does not wish to address the council, but he's continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. And I have a note from Susan Taylor, who does not wish to address the council, but is opposed to the special use permit ordinance 2017-10-059. And then there are two other individuals who will speak at the time this item is addressed. Next up is, um, the UC2B update with Paul Hickson.
Well, Mayor and council, I'd like to give a brief, uh, update on the UC2B project and the fiber.
Paul, could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Hickson, and I live at 209 West Indiana in Urbana, um, and I'm one of the appointees to the UC2B, um, not-for-profit board, representing city of Urbana. With me is Brian Bell, and Brian is employee of the university, um, in the I School, who's also working on this project, and Landy Navarro is also, uh, one of the Urbana appointees, right?
Yes.
To the UC2B board. And, uh, we wanted to give an update on the UC2B project. Let me begin by saying, you will recall that we used to have a, uh, private builder with ITV3. And, one of the things that was good about our relationship with ITV3 was we had required them to provide funds for a community benefit fund. They did that. They did not do a very good job of actually building out the fiber, but they did a good job of funding the community benefit fund. The UC2B board, um, did a very good job of shepherding those resources and being good stewards. And when we had trouble with ITV3's build-out, we realized we had to devote full attention to, um, finding a new vendor, and we put aside the Community Development Fund, Community Benefit Fund. Once we got a new vendor in the name of I3 Broadband, uh, we were able to resume activities on the Community Benefit Fund. Now, I3, I want to report, is doing a very good job, and our board was successful in having good terms with them that will require them, at the end of six years, to build fiber throughout the entire Champaign-Urbana community. They've, I've passed out to you three documents. The first is a map that shows the neighborhoods that they're already building in, and you'll notice that in Urbana, they're building out, they have built out more than in Champaign. They will be required, at the end of six years, to pass 22,000 single-family homes. In this next year, they will be passing 2,800 homes. And, um, we have also been successful in negotiating with I3, since they both serve the Peoria, East Peoria area and Champaign-Urbana, that they're gonna do Champaign-Urbana construction first next year ahead of Peoria. That has allowed us to return our efforts now to the Community Benefit Fund. And, um, we've had really good neighborhood participation. The Community Benefit Fund was originally an idea that was created by North End ministers who worked with their communities, their church communities, and came back with a proposal to a professor at the university who was attempting, at that time, to get some of the Obama funds for, uh, what they called above ground, and, and that never got funded, but those ideas never got forgotten. So when Mike Smeltzer and the university got the funding that we did get for the below-ground part, we made the creation of the Community Development Fund a really high priority for us. We didn't have money for it, because we couldn't use grant funds for it. That, that would have violated the terms of our agreement with the federal government. But we got the vendors to fund it. So we now have, as of, or will have by January 1st, $200,000 in that fund. And in our first year, we're going to have, uh, a, an award period that's just, Brian's gonna tell you about it, but we're going to launch something and, and hopefully, um, have $150,000 put to work in our community to help with digital equity and digital inclusion issues. So Brian, do you wanna pick up from there?
Sure. My name is Brian Bell. I'm at 401 East University in Cham, in Champaign, Illinois. I guess, uh, my official title is the, the Grant Coordinator, or the PI for the grant, pre and post awards. So that, our current status, I'm just gonna do this succinctly. Uh, so we're, we're officially accepting proposals, uh, for the Community Benefit Fund, from community organizations, nonprofits, faith-based institutions, anchor institutions, housing, schools, CTCs, uh, computer technology centers, or, and applicants within the scope and purpose of the grant. So here's what we know. In the first year, like, he's, um, Hickson just said, the first year of the grant program, we've allocated $100,000 to cover one-time grant expenditures, and a, and a total of $50,000 for reoccurring annual grant expenditures, for a total of $150,000 for the fiscal year of, uh, of 2018. Important dates that we need to know, um, all applicants are advised, or to attend a technical assistant and application training, um, session that we're having, and that will be at Stratton Elementary, November 1st, at 5:30 PM. That's Stratton Elementary School, and that's 902 North Randolph. The application deadline date is November 15th at midnight. That's a third, another date. Award notices will be, um, sent out mid-December, so, um, the, the training session's on the 1st, deadline's on the 15th, and by mid-December, we'll sending out notices of, of awardees. And funds will be awarded on or about January 15th. So, we're, we're asking the, the city council members if their constituents can also be notified of this opportunity. You know, we're, there's no marketing or advertising in this thing, and, and it's, it's been delayed for quite some years now, so we need to kinda blow some oxygen on the flame to get the public aware of this opportunity. Uh, thank you.
Would you like to add anything about what we're trying to get accomplished here?
Uh, just the main purpose that we have here is to, as Paul said, increase digital equity and access for lower and median income families in areas throughout Champaign-Urbana. We've heard of a lot of really interesting, uh, projects and people that are reaching out for funds so far, and, uh, yeah, we, we need help getting the word out so that we don't overlook people that have great ideas and, and don't know about us yet, so.
I, I would like to quickly add just one more thing. When, when the Community Benefit Fund was, was, that idea was resurfaced with UC2B and Paul Hickson, he, we quickly established this, this task force to do years' worth of work in weeks, and that's what we, what we've done. So, we meet every Thursday at 808 Dennison with, with this meeting, and it's open to the public, so we invite any community organization or nonprofit to come, join us, so we can, um, build, build to our team and get this, get this grant out here.
Any questions for the speakers? Aaron.
So thank you all for the presentation. We've had this conversation a couple of times at council and outside of council as well, to make sure that, um, that this benefit fund would actually be, would come to fruition and be used. The agreement with I3 will continue, to continue to put, is how much is it each year, or could you explain that just a little bit for some clarity?
When we negotiated with I3 and made them the new, uh, private partner, one of the agreements, one of the terms of agreement was that they will provide $50,000 expressly for the Community Benefit Fund for 10 years. So they have already done one year, and there will, those payments will continue for nine more years.
Okay, and just as a follow-up, the team who will decide how to disperse the $150,000, is that going to be three organizations, four organizations? Have you had any idea on how you want to, to disperse those funds?
Yes. Uh, one of the important things is how we're going to come to that conclusion, and making sure that we have involvement from the neighborhoods. So, uh, there will be representatives on the evaluation committee who are board members, and there will also be members from the neighborhood who are not submitting applications themselves or mentioned in an application, because that would represent a conflict of interest.
Just lastly for me, as it relates to demographics, socioeconomic status and stuff like this, is this going to be primarily earmarked or targeted towards more lower-income communities where the digital divide is greater?
Yes. Exclusively.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dennis, and then Bill.
Will the applicants need to be, um, in an area that's already being serviced by fiber optics to be able to connect or benefit from this plan? And if they're not, um, does that mean that the plan will actually bring that fiber to them?
Not necessarily. We know that, A, there is a need for digital skills, whether the fiber has gotten to them or not. And so, this is a, an effort so that when those resources are available, people can take advantage of it. But we don't want to tie it to whether your neighborhood has gotten fiber already, or is just about to get it.
So, so is it training, is it like IT training rather than focused on, um, material installation?
It is both training, uh, and it is also, uh, general skills training, but it is also, um, to provide resources for that training to occur. So training, training centers.
Yes.
Bill.
Yeah, thanks for explaining, um, explaining this. As far as the, um, the targeting, the low and moderate income for, so 50% of median family income, I know sometimes with HUD, we've had to actually go out and do surveys and prove that within a certain, uh, block group, that 50% of the families are below that threshold, and it seems like this, a lot of it will be organizations that bring people in from a wide area, but their target population is that group. So I'm, I'm just curious how, uh, it doesn't seem like you're gonna be able to ask somebody to prove that, you know, that that's their target population, but, um, can you just, um, explain, will they just have to verify that that, that tends to be their service population?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons why we want to have neighborhood people being part of that evaluation. We believe that, um, that'll keep it honest.
Yeah, I mean, I can just imagine, um, organizations, service organizations that, you know, in Urbana, we have a couple of, um, centers that draw from all over the city, but that tends to be their population, their income, target income population, but, um, it would be hard to prove unless you happen to ask everybody that walks in the door. But, um, so hopefully, you can be, have, show some flexibility on that, and not, um, you know, not disqualify somebody without some kind of proof.
I, I guess I wanna also publicly credit Sharon Irish, who is an Urbana resident and a member of this group that has been working on this. The application form that you have is Sharon's, uh, Wise Distillation, because we all said at the beginning that we wanted to have something that was streamlined, user-friendly, non-bureaucratic, but still got all the important information so we could separate wheat from chaff. And she came up with the key terms that you're seeing on that application form. Uh, the group refined it a little bit, but very little.
We also have the evaluation matrix.
And we do have an evaluation matrix that's explained in the instructions.
Eric.
So, while I can't speak for any staff person's time, I can speak for capabilities that we have on staff, and our statistician in the police department has very good facility with looking at census data, and then connecting geographic data, using that to connect geographic data to income. So if, for example, you have a proposal that says, the, these are the blocks, or this is the area where the people are gonna come from, I, I believe that, you know, if, if it's okay with her superiors, that she could tell you very quickly what the income distribution was in that area.
Right. Thanks, Eric.
Do you have a flyer or an announcement? If, if you could share it with us, we could post it to the city's social media, and then it would make it easy for the council members to share it with listservs. Is there?
We don't have a press release. We have a press release.
Okay.
And, and, uh, the, um, address that's on the instructions where you can download the kit from, that actually has the press release on it.
Okay.
If you go to the UCB, UC2B.net, um, there is a fairly prominent, on the front page, link to the page about the Community Development Fund.
Okay, we can share that then. Thank you. Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business. Next is reports of the standing committees, which would be the Committee of the Whole, and this would be Dennis Roberts.
Okay, we have a couple of items that have come from the Committee of the Whole that met last week, starting with Resolution 2017-10-069, R, a resolution adopting and authorizing the execution of promotional and marketing agreement concerning visit Champaign County for the year 2017 to 18, and for the committee, I move approval. Second.
Seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members Ammons.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Very good. Next comes Resolution Number 2017-10-070R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement, and this is with Urbana Business Association for the year 2007, fiscal year 2017 and 18, and for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second it.
Sec, moved by Dennis, seconded by Dean. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members Ammons.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next we have ordinance number 2017-10-058. This is an ordinance that revising the annual budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2017-18, Budget Amendment Number Three, and concerning rebudgeting and miscellaneous items from the Financial Department. Uh, for the committee, I move approval. Second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members Ammons.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next we have a Resolution Number 2017-10-066. This is a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement. This is an agreement between the city of Urbana and Parkland Community College regarding our, our AMS system, promoted by, presented by the IT Department of our community here. For the city, I move approval, for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Dean. Any further discussion? The clerk please call the roll.
City Council members Ammons.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next is Resolution Number 2017-10-067R, a resolution amending Housing Rehabilitation Program Operational Guidelines, as originally authorized by the Resolution Number 2015-05-023R, and this has to do with the City of Urbana Housing Program Manual, Program Years 2015 to 19. For the committee, I move approval. Second.
Seconded, moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Any further discussion? Aaron.
Yeah, so I was not able to ask some of the questions, or to just get a further understanding of this, uh, last, at the last meeting, so, just wanted to take a minute to make sure that I'm, I'm clear about this. The removal of slum and blight on a spot basis was one of the things. was one of the things that I wanted to make sure I understood, that this, I'm trying to figure out how this plays into TIF, or any of those types of things. Of course, this is blight, and I just, I'm not real comfortable with this right now. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of it, so.
Well, one of the reasons this was proposed to be changed was when HUD did their audit recently, they suggested that we change it. One of the issues was, we were using it in concert with acquisition and demolition. And through that process, we would acquire property, and it, and actually specifically, we're talking about the blight reduction program where we got a grant from the only housing development authority. And HUD's concern was about timeliness of getting affordable housing opportunities or closing out projects. So, when they talk about closing, when Matt explained it last week, closing out projects is in the IDIS HUD system, and it's a, it's how they measure performance of each one of the grants. And when a project is left open for a certain period of time, they get concerned about, are we really doing what, you know, the local, what our annual action plan indicates in our consolidated plan? This is for CDBG only. TIF, if there's funds available in a TIF district, my understanding is there, TIF is eligible, can be an eligible expense for demolition, but that's a separate thing that does, we don't, that doesn't have anything to do with the Housing Rehab Program Manual. And so, in essence, if, if we find city, more citywide, if there's a slum and blight targeted area, which we don't have any, we have target areas as, you know, by virtue of the income, you know, the areas, the block group areas that have been identified by HUD as low and moderate income areas, where we typically use our funds to provide affordable housing opportunities, or, you know, the, the projects that we do, like neighborhood cleanup, or emergency grant, or things like that, providing assistance to low, eligible low-income households. With this program, it's basically, the, the change is basically directed to changing how we work with the demolition component of it. So, what they want us to do is be able to demolish a property using CDBG funds. They don't want to stop us using CDBG funds on a slum and blighted property, but they want us to be able to close it out in the IDIS system. And that's in a more timely manner. And what they said was, if we just use it for that activity for abating slum and blight, as opposed to acquiring a property, abating the blight, and then making an affordable housing opportunity, it takes a lot longer to get to that end than it does just to get it closed out. Then we can all, you know, we're free to work with, with Habitat for Humanity, or other, another community housing development or nonprofit to develop housing on that property, but they just want to make sure that we keep our funding moving.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers, Ammons.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, and the last item that came from the Committee of the Whole is Resolution Number 2017-10-068R, a resolution approving and authorizing an Urbana Home Consortium Subsidiary Agreement with Rosenkrantz, TBRA, for the year 2017 to 2018. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Dean. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers, Ammons.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. That concludes the business of the Committee of the Whole. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. John Schneider, Community Development Manager.
Just one quick announcement. U-Haul, the U-Haul facility at 2010 South Filet Road will be having a grand opening event tomorrow from noon to 2:00 PM. The neighborhood, the city's invited. There'll be complimentary lunch, ribbon-cutting ceremony, giveaway and other activities, and they'll also be available for touring the facility.
Thank you. Any other announcements? New business. First up is Ordinance 2017-10-059, which is an ordinance approving a special use permit, 3202 North Lincoln Avenue, for Roanoke Concrete Products. So, we'll have a report by planning staff, then we'll take public input, and then open it up for council discussion and questions. So, we have Lori Pearson, Planning Manager, or Zoning Administrator, and Kevin Garcia.
Good evening. Before getting into the details of the case, I wanted to give a little bit of background and provide sort of a framework for, for considering this case tonight and for discussion. So, a special use permit in, just in general terms, looking at the zoning ordinance, so special use permits are required for projects with the potential for major impacts on the district that they are proposed in, or on the city as a whole. And special use, and special uses require a more thorough examination and plan review than just a normal case that's allowed, or than something that's allowed by right. And special use permits also allow conditions that the city council can, can impose on a project to make it less, to make any negative impacts lesser. The criteria that are used to evaluate special use permits, there are three, and they're found in our zoning ordinance. And these are really the only three that, the only three criteria that should be considered when, when deciding whether to approve or not approve a special use permit. And these not verbatim, but these criteria are, number one, that the use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. Number two, that the use will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district or to the public welfare. And number three, that the proposed use conforms to the regulations and standards of the district, and it preserves the essential character of the district that it is located in. This case went to the Plan Commission on the 5th of October, and at the Plan Commission, they discussed the site plan, the future extension of Airport Road, potential impacts of the proposal, and included in that was the proximity to Frasca Field, the airport to the east. After discussion, Plan Commission voted six to one to recommend approval to the city council. Also, at the Plan Commission, there was a memorandum that was submitted by Burns, Clancy and Associates, and that's in Exhibit E of your memo. And this was handed out and prepared on behalf of some property owners in the area, and that was to protest the special use permit. So, nearly all of the objections to the project that were stated in that memorandum are well beyond the scope of what must be considered in this special use permit case. And any arguments that are made in that memo that go beyond the project at hand, and that being the eleven and a half acre development, anything beyond that must be dismissed. Again, the three criteria that I just stated are what you must consider in this case, and nothing beyond that. There's also a neighbor protest letter that was submitted, and to be considered valid, a protest letter would, or, sorry, if it's, if a protest letter is valid, the vote from city council would have to be a supermajority, two-thirds vote, to approve the special use permit. And to be considered valid, it would need forty percent of the surrounding, or of property owners within 250 feet to sign the letter. Owners representing seven out of 23 lots, or thirty percent, sign the protest letter, so that protest is not valid, and a simple majority vote would be needed to approve or deny. Okay, so with that background, let's get on to the proposal itself.
So, two things. One, the protest that you just described, the people who sign on must be signed on with the letter that was put forth by the attorney in order to make them, make it a valid protest?
So, the property owners representing forty percent of the, of, of the owners who, who can have a claim, need to sign the protest letter. And only owners representing seven out of the 23 signed the letter.
So, the protest letter has to be submitted in a particular way, and people have to sign that letter? They can't submit something on their own, an email or some letter separate from that, and be considered valid?
Well, there are, there are conditions that have to be met, so that we can be assured that, that it is actually signed by the property owner. So, you need to state which property you own, give the property address, give your address and your name, and then sign it. So, I'm not sure if, if we got, you know, ten different letters that all followed that format. I suppose we, we might consider that valid.
But we, we did not receive that?
We did not. We did not. Seven out of 23.
So, from, you also said we must only consider three things. Was that a legal position?
Well, that, those are the criteria in the zoning ordinance that are required for making determinations on special use permits. So, I suppose if, you know, if the council took in, took other things into consideration, and, and made that part of, of their determination, it might be challenged, but that might be a question for, for our city attorney.
I didn't, I didn't get, couldn't divine the question over the description.
Okay, so, so the question is, there are the three criteria for a special use permit that must be taken into consideration.
And they're specified in the ordinance.
Correct. So...
Can you go beyond those criteria?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
It's very much like our historic preservation. I forgot exactly how many criteria. I think it's seven. And if, let's say the council were to consider some other criteria when landmarking a project, or in this case, granting or denying a special use, that would be subject to challenge, and my view would be the city would lose, because the criteria applicable as set forth, in this case, the special use part of the zoning ordinance, wouldn't have been... All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, on to the case itself. So, this is a, a site plan that you'll find in your exhibits. So, the entire, the entire property is 47 acres, but the, the special use permit, and what's being considered tonight is just this eleven and a half acre piece up here. So, and the, the proposed use is to do a ready-mix concrete facility and a concrete recycling facility. So, just very briefly, they would bring in raw, raw materials to make concrete, or, or concrete to recycle, and then they'd turn that into more concrete, and then ship it out in their trucks. The area surrounding, surrounding this site is industrial and agricultural. So, to the west, over here, to the west of Lincoln Avenue, there are three industrial properties. There's also a single-family home. There's a UPS facility, a Coca-Cola bottling facility, and then on Summer Drive, there is a concrete manufacturing facility. To the north and the east are agricultural parcels, so you can't see them here, but you can see them on Exhibit A, which shows more of the surrounding area. And then to the south, there is Max Twin City Recycling, and there's also a single-family home. You can see more info, as I mentioned, in Exhibits A, and in Exhibit B, and on Page Two, for the surrounding zoning and such. The property itself is Zone IN2, which is heavy industrial. And heavy industrial districts are intended to provide land for employment centers for more intensive industrial uses that typically generate heavy demands on the transportation system. These uses may cause odors, dust, noise, and vibrations, and generate significant amounts of truck and freight rail traffic. While a variety of heavy industrial uses are permitted in the IN2 zoning district, which you can see in Exhibit G, the proposed use, which is a ready-mix concrete plant, is not listed specifically as a permitted use, so we consider it under the catch-all, all other industrial uses category, and then those do require a special use permit. So, back to the site plan here. This is a preliminary site plan. A final site plan would need to be submitted before, before any building permits are issued. But this is, again, an 11.5 acre area, and sort of on the northern, just, just on the northern half of the, of the entire property. On the southern half, you'll see, it's about six and a half acres that, that will be set aside for a future extension of Airport Road, which would extend from Lincoln Avenue here, over to Airport Road, and then on to Cunningham Avenue. And that's long been on the books. It was planned in, in 1998 as a long-term project. And there, while there aren't plans to, to build that road in the next five years, it's not in our capital, five-year capital improvement plan. It is planned at some point in the future. I'll notice, on the site plan, there would also be a fence around the property, or on the, on this one, it's on the, on the northwest and south sides to help screen the materials and such from Lincoln Avenue. And that fence would have to meet our zoning ordinance requirements. And then, in addition, to keep down dust, the, any areas that would have trucks parked, or, or traveling around the site, would have to be paved. I did want to address the memo from Burns, Clancy and Associates, which is in Exhibit E, wanted to address that in a little more detail. But yet, again, to emphasize that most of, of the objections that are in that memorandum go beyond the geographic scope of, of the proposed project, and such arguments must be dismissed and not considered when making a final determination in this case. So, the analysis, Burns, Clancy analysis, looks at, it's, it assumes that the entire 47-acre parcel is under consideration at this time, which it is not. We are only looking at the 11.5 acres of the site. And if granted, the special use permit would only pertain to the proposed concrete and concrete recycling facility, and not the remainder of the site. Under the traffic analysis in the memorandum, again, making the assumption that the 47-acre tract would be developed, Burns, Clancy says that the traffic would increase by 56%. But if you, if you consider just the eleven and a half acres, and then factor that number down, you'd get about 180 vehicles per day, or about fourteen percent higher than the existing conditions. And that's pretty similar to the, the number of vehicles that Roanoke Concrete estimates their site will serve. And we have discussed that, city staff and Roanoke had discussed that previously, and our engineers say these roads can, can easily handle that amount of traffic. The city has spent millions of dollars to extend Lincoln Avenue north to Olympian Drive, and also millions on Olympian Drive, and they are resurfacing and also millions on Olympian Drive. And they are resurfacing, or we are resurfacing Lincoln Avenue along this stretch later in this, later in the year. So, that'll go all the way south of, of I-74. And the idea there is to accommodate heavy industrial traffic such as will be generated by this site. Lincoln Avenue here is a designated truck route. Also, the surrounding area is zoned for heavy industrial uses, which, again, are intended to, quote, "typically generate heavy demands on the transportation system." So, in other words, we have planned for, and we expect heavy industrial use along this corridor, and that is what this special use permit is proposing. Under the heading of Other Traffic Related Issues, BCA memorandum states that excessive driveways and intersections are not desirable along roads such as Lincoln Avenue. And there's only one driveway being proposed for the special use permit, and that driveway meets all of the city's access guidelines. Any future driveways would, that would be used to access the remainder of the site would need to be studied at the time of future development, and future driveways are not subject to review under the current special use permit request. The BCA memo states that the city of Urbana should not allow development that might in any way impact the current use or potential growth of Frasca Field, which is about three thousand, well, it's about, yeah, three thousand feet from the proposed building. And it's down here to the east. And I, I spoke to Tom Frasca on the phone at least three to five times, and he stressed to me that he would like the, the facility to be as far north as possible. And we, we relayed that to Roanoke Concrete, and they moved their facility, as shown in the site plan, as far north as is practical, based on the conversations that we had. I mean, it needs to be far enough from the old Lincoln Avenue here. It also needs to be far off of Summer Drive. So, we really feel that this site plan reflects good, good communication and good planning between staff and the applicant. The initial proposal was to put it on the southern part of the site down here, which would have been directly in line with, with the airport, with the airport approach. Okay. The BCA memo also states that sanitary sewer service and stormwater management are required for the site. We agree, and the developer is responsible for providing both. So, there's that. Finally, the memo adds in LaSalle factors. And LaSalle criteria are specific criteria that are only used in rezoning requests. And despite the, the claim in the memo that they should be considered in this case, they absolutely should not be considered in this case, and only the requirements for a special use permit should be considered. So, on to those requirements. Number one is that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at this location. Again, this area is meant for heavy industrial development, and the west side of Lincoln Avenue is already developed with heavy industrial uses, including an asphalt plant, an asphalt recycling facility, construction materials recycling facility, concrete recycling facilities, and a waste transfer station. The site has convenient access to I-74 and soon to have convenient access to I-57 via the Lincoln Avenue extension to Olympian Drive. And in addition, the Urbana Comprehensive Plan designates this area for heavy industrial uses. So, it meets, this proposal meets Criteria One. For Criteria Two, says that the use will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district or otherwise injurious to the public welfare. This facility will not be injurious to the public at this location. The public should derive some benefits from the facility diverting construction materials from going into local landfills and then in reusing those materials in construction projects here and throughout the state. And again, the area is already heavily industrialized, and the addition of another industrial use would not be unreasonably detrimental to the area. So, Criteria Two is met. And the final criteria is that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of, and preserves the essential character of the district. Again, this is a heavy industrial district, and the proposed special use is a heavy industrial use. All other applicable development requirements will have to be met prior to construction and operation of the facility. So, the proposed development would conform to the regulations of the IN-2 Heavy Industrial District. As I mentioned earlier, the city council may impose additional conditions when, if granting a special use permit, and those conditions would be appropriate or necessary for public health, safety, and welfare. So, at the October 5th, 2017 Plan Commission meeting, Plan Commission voted six to one to forward the case to the city council with a recommendation to approve the special use permit with the conditions that are stated on Page Seven of, of the staff memorandum. And staff concurs with, with the recommendation. I guess I skipped over your options, but your options, as usual, are to approve the special use permit, to approve the special use permit with any conditions, or to deny the special use permit. That concludes my report. I can answer any questions you might have. I know the, the applicant is here if you have questions for them as well.
Bill?
Yeah. Thanks, Kevin. On Page Two, it says future land use to the east is residential. On the future land use map, it looks like it's light industrial, as far as I can tell. Is there any residential plan for the east, east of there?
Are you talking about the...
There's a chart, like a table, a table on Page Two of the memo?
Yeah, let me take a look. Let's see. Future land use residential. There's no residential proposed there that I know of.
So, that would probably be light industrial or, or office. In the, on the future land use, it looks like it just says transition to heavy, from heavy industrial to light industrial in that area, if I'm looking at the right section.
I think the intention there was a portion to the north of the site, so I think that's an error in the table. My apologies on that.
Oh, okay.
The future land use to the north does show some residential.
Okay. On the other side of the creek, it looks like. And then, I mean, there is existing residential not too far to the east there. But the, the plan doesn't go clear back to the borders of the lot. So, would we consider some kind of buffer there when there was a plan that came before us to build out the rest of that lot on that side? I mean, I think for heavy industry, there's really no backyard requirement or, and I'm not sure about buffering between county property that's not zoned in the city and city property.
Well, I, I suppose you could, yeah, I'm not sure if that would get developed as residential anytime in, you know, the next fifty years, but I suppose you could add a condition to the special use permit that says at such time that there is residential development, then they would put up screening on the east side of the, of the site.
Yeah, I guess what I was meaning was that there's already residential use there, that one, in that one section. And I don't know if they're prohibited from adding residential there, but...
Well, the only, so we have screening requirements when adjacent to something that is zoned residential, or in some cases, if there is an existing residential use that's there. But there's nothing that, you know, there, there's nothing compelling that in this case because it's not zoned residential or have a residential use there.
And then as far as storage of materials goes, I know some of the other industries, the shingle place and the construction material place have pretty tall piles. And I know that one of the conditions recommendate, conditions, special conditions recommended was to adhere to the FAA rules so that you would be within certain, you'd have to be lower than what they would require for their flight path rules. But in general, do we have any kind of limitations on how high industrial materials can be stored on these lots?
Well, in general, we say that it has to be screened so that it can't be seen from a public right-of-way. And I guess in practice, you, that might not always be the case. I think here, those piles are set back, you know, a few hundred feet from Lincoln Avenue. So, I'm not sure what the geometry would need to be to see them over an eight-foot tall, a six or eight-foot tall fence would be. And I'm not sure how tall the piles get, would get at, at this facility. So, maybe, maybe you can ask the applicants how tall their, their piles are at their existing facilities elsewhere.
And then, I, I think that the tallest building was sixty-eight feet. Is that right? The proposed, proposed building?
That's correct.
I think we have trees that are probably taller than that in that area. So, okay. Thank you.
Dennis?
On Page Two of our memo that you created, created for us, you indicate a, an image of the, the site plan or an image of the Roanoke facility in Mossville.
Yes.
And you said they would basically be similar. I guess that's because the same kind of equipment would be required?
That's correct.
So, the two towers that are behind the, the rectangular building, are these the material recycling? Are these crushers? Are these, what kind of, what kind of, what kind of equipment is that?
I, I believe that's where the, the concrete gets mixed. Those are the...
Oh, storage.
They're, they're storage.
All right. So, those look like they're the tallest thing in the proposed, proposed...
Yeah. And then, it might be a question for the applicants to see if, if the plan is to have a building that's taller than this one.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how tall those towers would be.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Mary Alice?
Yes, my question is in regards to the SETH recommendation, the site plan show conformed FAA requirements for runway protection zone. I'm assuming that that refers to ensuring that Frasca Field, as it is currently regulated by the FAA, means in the same regulation so that, i.e., it wouldn't be cut in length. Is that correct?
I think I followed your question. That's, are, are you asking, well, let me ask for clarification. Are you asking, actually, maybe, could you restate that? I'm not sure I followed.
Sure. So, I think that one of the concerns from the people who operate Frasca was that if there was a building that was considered too high by FAA regulations, the FAA would say that their runway would need to be cut down. They couldn't have the length that they currently have. Right. So, my question is, does this statement, number five, basically say that the special use permit would have to adhere to what the FAA says is the correct length of runway protection zone, the height of the building and so forth, so that they could maintain the current length of the runway?
That's, yes, that's correct. And I did, I pulled up, there's an old runway protection zone analysis that was done in the Airport Road Extension study back in nineteen ninety-eight. And I overlaid those. Sorry, Mary Alice, you're not going to be able to see this unless you're, unless you're watching. I'm not sure. Well, I'm not sure if I can describe it perfectly, but I'm going to pull up here what the, I guess the most conservative, actually, let me pull up something else. So, it's the most, I'd say the most conservative estimate that was from that study. And that was including a proposed one-thousand-foot runway extension. So, they, Hanson Engineering back in nineteen ninety-eight did the analysis from the end of that runway extension. And we compared that runway protection zone to where the, the proposed facility would go. And it's, it's well beyond it. Let's, let's just say that. So, the, the proposed building footprint for you that can follow, since you're looking at the screen. So, here's the building footprint. Here's the end of the runway protection zone, sort of this trapezoid area. So, anything outside of there could be built as tall as, as tall as our zoning would allow, so.
So, the zoning, what is, I thought that the zoning said that there wasn't a maximum height. What is the zoning in industrial two for the maximum height of a building?
I, I believe you're correct. Let me, let me pull up the, I think it's Exhibit G. It'd be the zoning description sheet. There is no max. That's correct. So... So, I guess the limit is what, what is needed for the facility.
And what currently is at a sixty-five, sixty-eight feet is the proposal?
That's correct. Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Okay.
We'll hear from two people who wish to speak, and then if there are questions for the, are the applicants here? Okay. And we'll, if you have any questions for applicants, we'll have them available as well. So, first up, Chris Billing from Burns, Clancy.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Chris Billing with Burns, Clancy &amp; Associates, engineers, surveyors, and planners here in Urbana. And over the last forty years or so, I've, I've been able, I've been an engineer there and, and been associated with a lot of developments in the area, many of which are even in Urbana. So, you do have our memorandum there, and I'm not going to go and review that. Hopefully, you've taken the opportunity to maybe review that, and I will be happy to answer questions about that. I just wanted to recap a few items, though, is all I really want to do at this time. I think that memo does point out there is some notable traffic from the development of this tract that you should consider. The city has spent millions of dollars and will spend millions more on the Lincoln Avenue improvements, and as it connects to Olympian Drive, and there's a lot of money there in the future. And I think that's an investment that the public, the citizens of Urbana, and actually the wider community of this area of Champaign County in general, would like to see protected and effectively used. And it's, the, this, the whole concept of we're only going to look at eleven and a half acres and we put our blinders on, kind of goes... and we put our blinders on, kind of goes in contravention to what the city's policies, procedures, and actions have been over the course of many years. This is a 47-acre tract. It may be developing 11 acres to begin with, but it certainly, I don't know why we want to not do some, at least comprehensive planning to understand. Everything doesn't have to be built at the beginning. Maybe only 11 acres gets built to begin with. But why do we not plan for 47 acres and how it's going to impact the area so that we don't want to, we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot by starting off and, and as an example here, developing 11 acres out of the middle of a tract, and then is that going to, I don't know, what's going to go around the perimeter? How is that going to preclude, will that preclude continuing development of this 47-acre tract? And if it does, then does that hurt the land value and of the lands around it? It certainly might. But more importantly, or getting back to the traffic, I think, looking at the overall traffic of the tract and how it's going to interact with what you're planning, once, once Lincoln Avenue is open, and you're going to be, you're going to be funneling more traffic, probably more truck traffic down here. The improvements that you're spending the millions of dollars really continue still only two lanes. As traffic increases over the years, with hopefully more development beyond 11 acres, that you're going to have more and more truck traffic. When do you add those extra lanes? When do you add the other protections? This special use permit, it's a good time to put the conditions in right now when the developers of, the owners of this tract and the developers, when do they contribute for the impacts they make to the public here? We're not telling them, I don't think anyone would say they're responsible for adding multiple lanes to Lincoln Avenue and turn lanes and things necessarily at this point, but putting the conditions in, a special use permit, of when, when it's appropriate for those contributions seems totally to safeguard the interests of the public. Otherwise, are we looking at 10 years down the road, 15 years, 20 years? Is the city of Urbana going to kick in all the money it takes to do improvements to Lincoln Avenue? If you've got the funds and resources and that's your intention, I'm sure a lot of developers would like to hear that all across the city. The site plan we're looking at, I believe, is lacking because it does not really address the, the extension, the future extension of Airport Road. We kept, we talk about it being in the future. Well, it's been noted in the future, probably in planning documents, for well more than 20 years, maybe 30 years. At some point, that, the extension of Airport Road is going to need to happen. And if you talk to your other, other staff with, with safety and all, the more connections need to be made between Lincoln Avenue and Route 45. Airport Road is an extension that's been noted for a long time that needs to happen. Again, a condition on a special use permit's an appropriate place to at least tie, tie the developer of this quarter-mile tract to the land of when contributions toward that need to be made. Maybe it's not required to put it in day one, but maybe a condition of the special use permit identifies when it's appropriate, not just dedicating or allowing the right-of-way to be bought from them, but what is the contribution to the landowner? That is, that's the way development has happened in Urbana for a lot of years. I have just done some, I guess, quick Google Earth photography. I've got some exhibits here of other locations in Urbana that shows developments that have occurred, some older, some more new, where comprehensive overall planning has been thought out, and some, some contribution or, or, something's been included to allow, to accommodate development that might yet happen in the future. And I'll go ahead, and there's just, there's nine exhibits, if you will. I'll just pass them around as an example, and. There, yes. There are nine different ones. It's just, it's present Google Earth photography. And you certainly could look at more areas around town. But very quickly, just to go through those, the first one is the Berkey's site out on, on Route 130. The second one is the Walmart site. You can see roads have been extended a little bit, even partway, to allow for access for future development. And the first development then takes access off of there. There are the next two are North Lincoln Avenue, west of the site, where subdivision streets were put in that allow multiple lots to access instead of, instead of multiple driveways out onto an arterial road. The next one is Napleton Road, up there north of the interstate. You can see how that's extended, and there's several businesses take access from that, plus it's ready for continued extension for other areas yet to be developed. Triumph Drive is one. You can see a preponderance of driveways along Route 45, but Triumph is in there that allow multiple businesses to access the highway at just one location. Kenyon Road at Route 45, again, multiple businesses are accessing one public street there. And I've included a Windsor and Phila Road, the Pines Development there. You have two nice connections out onto those two arterial streets that serves a much greater area. And then farther south on Phila Road, south of Windsor, you have, you know, Holt, you have, so, and, and it's not unusual, you have Holt subdivisions that are allowed only an access or two, and that, that serves the better traffic safety of the overall public. That point is made in, in the memo report. So I'm just, I asked the question, why is there no comprehensive planning being required at this stage of the special use permit for this 47-acre tract? Clearly, Urbana has done that in the past, and it obviously serves the better interests of the entire public. And, I don't know, if you, if you just develop those 11 acres and, in the middle of the tract, and then nothing else develops around the outside perimeter, ever, how does that, how does that benefit the citizens of Urbana? I don't think that it does. There's a great opportunity right now to have the developer figure, reconstitute a site plan that actually makes sense, that will serve the present 11 acres that he wants to do, plus what can happen in the future. And then, again, I don't know, why, why are you, they, why is the request based on a preliminary site plan where we know the site plan's going to change? If you have a special use permit to grant, it's based on, certainly based on the site plan. We know there's items that, that staff has indicated are going to, certainly going to change, and stormwater detention's not addressed. There's a lot of other things not addressed, questions about the airport, if there's potential impacts. I mean, I do know that, and you would probably have to get someone from Frasca Field to talk about the operations of the airport. The, the approach, the approach of that runway is not straight east and west, you know, along that alignment, because you have an overlap with the Willard Airport air, the traffic control, and what's allowed at Frasca Field. So most of the, a lot of the approach is curving in from the north or down, or, or from the north. They circle around. So I can't speak to the operations entirely of Frasca Airport. Someone should, should speak to that specifically. But that is, that, overall, the placement of those structures and that development is important. And I just ask that you tie some important, these important concepts to the special use permit. Otherwise, it will, could negatively impact Urbana.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I think in our minutes of the Plan Commission meeting, you mentioned that some of these other businesses, like Supervalue and others, had contributed toward the construction of Lincoln Avenue. Is that right?
There was a discussion, I didn't mention that. That was a discussion point made by somebody in the room. I remember hearing that.
Okay. So you don't know how that mechanism would have worked if it was, I don't know, Special Service District or Impact Fee or something like that?
Correct. I, yeah, I don't know, I don't know how that was a, I remember hearing that comment, but I don't, that wasn't me that made that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Dennis?
Yeah, so Chris, you're concerned about the, the more complete image of what that development would be for the entire 47 acres, but you're not necessarily against having a cement plant at that location?
Oh, that's correct. I mean, that would, that would be a reasonable use in an industrial zone, and, and I'm not saying that that business shouldn't be there. I'm, I'm just saying that the site plan that's provided, I think, is, is ill-thought-out to the point where it would be detrimental to the city, and a, a different arrangement of, that incorporates what the whole 47-acre development is going to look like, is, is what is necessary to do.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. David Thies? Sorry, Aaron?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I was actually going to ask Bill a similar question, Bill Gray, around this idea, because I'm very curious as to the impact of the, the roads and transportation concerns around that. And I didn't know if there was any sort of, when we're resurfacing or building the roads, I know we're taking into consideration the zoning, but I just wanted to hear from you with your expertise, speaking to some, this type of business being on North Lincoln and the work, the work that we've put into it, what that impact would be, and if do we have a precedence that's been set that the developer contributes, or there's some sort of bonding or whatever to help us alleviate those concerns in the future?
There's been a lot of points made by the speaker. I'll try to address them, if you want me to address them now. But we have done a lot of planning over the last 20, 25 years with Lincoln Avenue and Airport Road. The planning has been done such that as development occurs, we have a roadway facility to accommodate the traffic and the type of traffic that would use it. So Airport Road, or Lincoln Avenue, for example, we are finishing multi-millions of dollars of improvements, resurfacing as we speak, going on right in this area, which will easily accommodate the additional traffic of this 47-acre tract. The current traffic volumes are probably less than 2,000 vehicles per day. His report, VCA reports at 1,300. I'm not going to refute that, but the two-lane roadway can easily handle 10,000 to 12,000 vehicles per day, or five or six times that amount or more. We won't be needing four lanes of traffic until we're way over 12, probably even over 15,000 vehicles per day, although if there's so many trucks, which there are, it may be a lower number. So I'd like to be alive when I see 12,000 vehicles a day on Lincoln Avenue. But we have the additional right-of-way, we have the bridge, everything's been planned for four lanes. That's what we built into the preliminary design and in the location study. So that is all accommodated. With respect to adjacent properties contributing, that rarely has happened. We do not have impact fees. Okay? Now, if there's a certain impact that they need to add a traffic signal or turn lanes, then they would have to do that. But this is a driveway to a concrete plant. The traffic volumes don't require enough turn lane on Lincoln Avenue at this time. It's developer preference. I haven't spoken to the developer, but if they want to build a, ask a concrete plant in the middle of a 47-acre tract, I mean, I don't disagree with Chris's comments about other development on the site. It may be more problematic. But if they want to put it where they are putting it, respecting our access to Lincoln Avenue, that's their decision. But we made it clear that we wanted area or right-of-way, future right-of-way for Airport Road, if and when we develop Airport Road. We did do that location study back in the late 90s, and it had various alternatives. We knew the airport runways. We looked for a worst-case scenario for that road to, again, I guess we like S's in Urbana, but this is another S curve to accommodate summer drive connection over to US 45 Cunningham Avenue. As many of you know, we're reconstructing Airport Road right now between US 45 and Willa Road. Someday, I don't know when that will be, it will be extended, hopefully, to Lincoln Avenue, and yes, the fire chief would love to see that happen someday, and others, to have that connectivity. But today, we don't have the need to extend Airport Road. But if and when we do, with this sort of development, and maybe other needs and other developments, that will happen. But what would trigger this developer, this development to aid in that is, if they decide to subdivide, if they decide to subdivide, then we're talking a different story with respect to dedicating public right-of-way and building the roadway. But if they stand pat with the 11 acres and nothing else, and let's fast forward 10 or 15 years from now, we want to build Airport Road, well, then we will come to them, and we need to buy the right-of-way, and we need to build the road. That's very akin to what we did on Lincoln Avenue right now. We wanted to build a road to connect Airport Road with South Lincoln Avenue. It's farmland. We approached the farmland owners, and we bought the right-of-way, and we built the road. So it's a little bit of a, what happens first with development, subdividing, who, who requires, we may require dedication right-of-way and building of a road versus it's on the city. It's kind of a, it's a timing situation. But I didn't look at all nine pictures, but most of those examples, there was no private property contributions. If Walmart was one of them, yeah, Walmart did some improvements east of High Cross Road at their expense. The city contributed $0 to the Walmart development. But many times, it's the city enhancing through TIF or other means, you know, where we may have some sort of development agreement where we, we may refund some property tax dollars to enhance development. But here, there are no incentives given. With respect to the driveway being offset, Chris, that would be, it would be worked out in the final plans. Stormwater detention, sanitary sewers, you know this, I mean, that gets worked out in the final plans. I mean, that's not a requirement right now to be shown. But they'll have to provide stormwater detention, sure, that's fine. But no, I'm very comfortable with this development or anything similar to it on this 47 acres, full buildout, that'd be great for Urbana. Okay? Can we accommodate the traffic for full buildout of 47 acres? Yes, absolutely. If all 47 went, we would probably have to build Airport Road sooner, but then again, the developer would probably pay a majority of that cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Thies?
Thank you. Good evening. Coming through.
You have five minutes.
My name is David Thies. I'm a lawyer with the Urbana firm of Weber &amp; Thies, 202 Lincoln Square in Urbana. We represent Blager Properties, who is one of the owners of land in the immediate vicinity of this property. I'll not repeat what Mr. Billings has gone through, although I think the dialogue was instructive. I'll, I'll address the legal question that I think is, is before you. This, of course, is industrial zoning, and the use is industrial, but it's not a use that is allowed as a matter of right. So there is nothing in the ordinance that says you may, you may do this here. The City Council has the opportunity to look at what the use is, approve it, but with conditions. And that's really what we're saying. We're not opposing the idea that there will be future industrial development on this site. What we're saying is that this is an 11-acre use in the middle of a 47-acre tract that is really a diamond in the rough kind of a place for Urbana. This is the area where Urbana is going to find industrial development. We've planned for it that way. And the standard that you're to apply to this, which I won't belabor, but, but just the two, the two second, or actually, the first two points, how is the proposed use conducive to the public convenience? That's your standard. And also, how the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district? Well, I take from that that it is your job to decide if this use is consistent with the zoning and planning determinations that have already been made. And therefore, I think it's reasonable that you take into consideration the future of the area, and look at this 11-acre site, admittedly 11-acre site, and consider some of the points that Mr. Billings has been making about the comprehensive planning that should be done. Perhaps what we're urging is just that time be taken to take a look at this. to take a look at this and consider the possibility that this forty-seven acre site may someday be the location of some kind of an industrial park that may contain internal streets. Not that you can cause this developer to make those streets happen, but it may be that the conditions that you might impose upon this developer would be those that would be consistent with that kind of future use of this property. Not because we're against the development, but because we want the development to be enhanced and to take full advantage of this forty-seven acre site. Urbana doesn't have very many of these kinds of sites, and I mentioned in closing what I think is one of the most obvious points that stands out here, and that is that we've just opened access to Olympian Drive, which will make this area even more conducive to the kind of development we're talking about in a way that it hasn't been conducive over the last fifty years. And for those reasons, we urge at least that there be a delay, that there be a consideration, that some a look be given to some of the traffic concerns, some of the other infrastructure development concerns, that while they don't directly relate to the eleven-acre site, the eleven-acre site will impact those in the future, and so now is the time that you could be imposing conditions that might be helpful. Thank you very much.
I know the, at least one council member had a question for the applicants. Mary Alice, would you like to state your question?
Yes, I was curious about any environmental concerns that are generated from cement-making and what procedures you have to minimize those.
We try to meet all runoff water and air pollution that we can. I don't know if we don't meet it. We do what we do, and we have never had any issues with it.
We have EPA guidelines that we have to follow also.
And you, I have a couple of questions. You operate plants in other areas?
Yes, we have six, seven other plants.
Six or seven?
Seven, yeah.
And how many employees do you expect to be working at this site?
Anywhere from about five to ten employees to start with. We really, really come down in speculation of business.
Any other questions for the applicants? Eric?
So at your other sites, which have been developed, I guess, over the course of a number of years, have they led to or triggered or facilitated development, other development adjacent to them? Have you seen that happen?
Well, most of the time, we go in sites where we can get into. And lots of times, and I'd be perfectly honest with you, we've been, we've gone in junkyards, we've gone in sites that nobody else would take because of zoning issues and special use permits, just like this. And we never have had any other developments. And to be perfectly honest with you, and I'm going to lay this all out to you, I'm all for Airport Road. Soon as you guys want to do it, we would be, we'd be on board and we'd be willing to work with you on the price of the land. That's how forward we are. If any future development for us would become off of Airport Road, so, and we have no plans at this time.
Dennis?
Yeah, thanks for coming forward and clarifying some issues for us. So one of the concerns that you've heard is that they would really, people would really like to see what your large concept for the entire forty-seven acres is. You're just showing the specific use that you want to put it to, and you're indicating, I don't know if it was in the Plan Commission meeting or other, that you really intended just to sell the other acreage because it's not going to be...
No, our plans are not to do anything with the ground right now. Our plans are to put our eleven-acre site there and just pretty well be there. Really don't want any neighbors.
Is there, is there a reason, is that partly the reason why you're not proposing at this time subdivision of land? I mean, you've got, okay, you have like...
We have no, we have no plans.
Honestly, I think we bought the eleven, we bought the forty-five acres because that was what was available.
We wanted ten acres.
We only wanted ten, ten to fifteen.
Yeah, that's all we really wanted. And we took forty-seven acres because it was available, and it's zoned right.
Well, it seems to me that this potentially would be land banking your property for maybe future use or sale at a future time, which would be logical, I would think.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that wouldn't be illogical at all, no.
But at that time, you would have to come up with a subdivision plan.
And we would come to the city before we did anything and ask their opinion. I mean, we would want to be on board with the city on anything they wanted to do on that property as far as what they wanted to say.
Right. And so at that time, you'd be able to satisfy the needs not only of the city, but maybe of the residents, of showing how the connectivity to Lincoln Drive would occur via probably what it would be, street access in a subdivided plan?
Possibly, yes, yes.
So those concerns are really future concerns compared to the interests that you are showing today of just starting your business in the middle of your pot.
All we're really down here is to put that eleven acres in. I mean, we're not really trying to develop any more ground than that, and I mean, we would be open to whatever the city had to say about development and whatever we want.
And I don't know if this really matters to anyone in particular, but I was wondering, you show that your site plan shows the building in front, the construction piles of granite or crushed concrete or whatever it's going to be, to the back, and I guess that's to screen it from the street. I don't know if that's true or not.
That's just the way a concrete plant is set up, really.
Is, I just wondered if there was a reason or it would be more useful for future development of other properties on the plant, on the site, to set that up in a vertical, vertically north to south rather than horizontally east to west?
Well, what we ran into is getting access into the property. You know, we want a direct access onto Lincoln. That's where we want to come in and out, and we want we want direct access from the time we load, because we're in a perishable commodity, and we want to, we want to make the time as little as possible to get on the road and get to the job site. So from the time we load to the time we get to the job site, we want to make that as short as possible because it is a perishable product, it does start to get hard as soon as we patch it, and from then on, it's a fight with time.
And if there was going to be future development, would it be useful to you to include in your site plan for this project an access road that might why off, that would allow a development toward the north or the south?
We'd be open if that's what it would have to be. I mean, if that's something you guys would want to see. I mean, we wouldn't be against it. I mean, it's not something we're not, we're pretty easy to work with.
Because right now, what you have is, the access goes right into your front yard of your plant, and if there was going to be development and people were concerned about multiple access points on Lincoln, it would be a good time now to set up at least an entry drive before you put your plant in position.
I think there's enough room there to do that, yes, if that's, if that was one of the stipulations.
All right, well, that would be one of the stipulations I would hope the city council would consider in granting this permit.
I think staff has information on that point, Dennis. Bill, do you want to, do you have a question? Laurie will address that point.
Just about adding future potential things that might happen. Typically, with special use permits, condition number one is you've got to build it according to the attached site plan. So I'd just be worried about locking them into something when they don't have any potential purchasers or potential users. So if there would be additional language, I'd want to be really careful about what that says so that changes are possible to reflect realities in the future.
Bill?
Yeah, besides the mixed concrete, some of your other sites, you've sold pavers or something like that?
We sell blocks, and we've been selling blocks down in this market for probably going on about thirty, forty years. We supplied some of the blocks for some of the major projects down in town here. And we sell pavers. We sell a little bit of that, but that's not really our business. Our business is concrete. That's ninety-five percent of our business. That's what we do, and we do it real well, so.
So on this site, do you plan to manufacture or...
It's doubtful that we'll have any product like that, but our trucks will come in and we'll utilize them for taking stuff back, or in our plant, that'd be about it. We may have a few blocks there, but I doubt it.
When you sell those, are they mostly directly to developers?
Anybody that walks in the door, so. We do have, we will have retail sales there of some materials, rock or sand or recon or recyclable products that, you know, anybody can come in and buy. So we do have a little retail sales, but most of it's truck traffic, like they said.
And would you also be accepting recycled concrete if somebody has a couple slabs from a sidewalk?
Not necessarily. Most of it will be generated from our product. We get plenty ourselves. There are some days we have as much as a couple foundations we throw away just from overloadage. So this is where it becomes, and we try to pour, we try to recycle it as much as we can. We go right to bunker blocks first, and then whatever we have left, we end up grinding it up and using it as basis for new buildings, so. The only reason we're in recycling is because we generate recycling products.
So much.
Yeah, so much of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Aaron?
So thank you, gentlemen, for coming to answer some questions and for considering bringing a business to Urbana. You said about five to ten employees?
We're just guessing. I mean, it could possibly go up to twenty employees, you know, and it's all unionized wages, so, and it's not non-union, so.
So the other sites that you have, what's the average number of employees that you have in some of your...
In our Blumenthal facility, we're up, we're up for about eleven employees there. Our East Peoria, which is our hub, is, we've probably got forty employees there. And we're not, some of the plants only have five trucks. It just depends on use, and we move our equipment around as we need it. So, I mean, we won't have to have every truck that we need every day down here. We just have to have enough trucks to get started during the day, then we shift trucks as we need them. So our traffic patterns will be by what we need to produce that day.
And I certainly appreciate the the union wages and union labor that you said, that you spoke of. The, is that, will there be brick masons? What?
No, it's teamsters.
Team, for the drivers?
Yes.
In particular, but, so your employees are mostly the drivers, that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Be one employee besides the driver most days.
Okay. And the, when you look at your makeup and your companies and other, all across the state or wherever you have your different businesses, what sort of, what do you think your demographics, your diversity is in your makeup of your business?
As far as what?
Race.
What?
Race. And gender.
You know, I don't know. I would say we're probably maybe ten to twenty percent minorities. I don't really know. I mean, we hire anybody we can. I mean, as long as they can, they can do the, do the job. It's not about, you know, race.
With truck drivers, they kind of, kind of come and go a lot. So there's some that, they get laid off in the winter time, and sometimes they come back, sometimes they don't. So our crew that we have, our senior drivers usually come back, but a lot of the others, they might find other steady work, year-round work, and they don't come back. So we kind of have a turnover on that end quite a bit, too.
So...
It can change year by year.
It can change year to year, yeah.
So you guys hire the people who come in directly? They're not coming out of a hall?
No, no, we usually have direct hire, yes. No, you can't just send somebody out of the hall because there usually isn't anybody sitting in there.
I was just wondering, trying to get a understanding of how you... Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Any follow-up questions for staff? Dennis?
Okay, well, I mean, I think I'd like to kind of pursue a little bit, maybe Laurie Presson, Laurie Pearson could help me. As far as inserting into this agreement, perhaps it would be a twenty, twenty-two-foot setback before the building site, the building itself could be footed to allow for possible drive, drive access. If and when future development occurred that would require drive access, if there's only going to be one allowed access point on the entire site. So I wouldn't want the building to be positioned in such a place where connectivity to the rest of the, the rest of the forty-seven acres would be inconvenienced.
So is your question, could the access point be moved either north or south to accommodate connecting another user in the future?
Not so much, but I see that on the south, it looks like parking, parking's indicated, and that would block a truck turning south to a future southern-positioned subdivided property and business location from being convenient. And is there enough space for you know, a future potential planned roadway that would, that would facilitate developing the other property twelve years from now?
I think Bill had a comment.
I think the straight answer is where this driveway access to Lincoln Avenue is, pretty much preempts any other public street off Lincoln Avenue. So if there's development on the balance of the forty-seven acres, it would either come off of at the south end, somewhere east of Lincoln Avenue off Airport Road, or Oaks Road to the north. So it'd be a north-south public street orientation. And I would not recommend any T-ing in, Y-ing in, V-ing in, or whatever at this driveway for a public street. No, this is it. This is the access to Lincoln Avenue. So there won't be a driveway a hundred feet north or a hundred feet south of this. This is pretty much their sole access to the forty-seven acres. The balance will come from the north, Oaks Road, or from the south, Airport Road.
Okay, so that means that future development will come from a different road, and it won't be off this road. So we don't have to worry about that because that's a future we can plan for that.
The south of this driveway, we need all that to be access-controlled for an intersection of an Airport Road someday.
Right, so this is not the only access point that's available to develop the line?
Oaks Road and Airport Road, future Airport Road.
Well, that satisfies my concern.
Any further questions for staff? Bill?
As far as the EPA permits, I'm not sure what's involved in EPA permits for a concrete plant. But I know we went through kind of the same thing with the Shingle Plant. They had some kind of EPA permits to do as far as keeping dust down. If we, and if it was problematic, I'd assume that the opponents might have brought it up, so I'm not too concerned about it. But if the city council wanted to impose additional additional, additional conditions around environment, around EPA, it would be helpful in the future to know what the EPA requires of these places, and I mean, that's really my only comment, is maybe in the, in the future, when we have industries that require EPA permits, it'd be helpful to know what they require because maybe we would think that they don't go far enough and would want additional conditions.
Dennis?
This'll be my last one. Concerning that, the other thing we haven't really, we haven't really talked about is noise abatement. We've talked about dust, we've talked about, you know, in the, in the plant, there's potential for landscaping requirements. What about noise abatement? Do we have concern about that?
Well, if you were to look at the IN2 zoning district purpose statement, actually, it calls out that these are the areas where noise will be. So it expects industries that produce noise to be cited in the IN2 zoning district. So there's no specific abatement included in this plan as far as I know, other than obviously toward the north, there's that grove of trees that will, that will help to the north.
Aaron?
So when we have these types of developments, you guys talked about the specific areas, the criteria that must be met. We don't, we don't need, we don't have to know the EPA guidelines in order to approve something like this?
No, I think as long as we add a condition that says you have to adhere to the EPA guidelines, I think that's pretty, I think that would be sufficient.
A state permit trumps our permits anyway, so if a state requires something, they got to do it.
Mary Alice?
I'm sorry about the feedback. So if the special use permit is specifically to allow a concrete or cement company at that location, but it has nothing to do with the structure, the building structure that would be built on that, is that correct?
I think, are you just asking, it's, sorry, it's kind of hard to hear you. Are you just asking if this permit is essentially just for the use and it has nothing to do with what, what the building looks like or anything of that nature?
Yes.
Okay, that's correct. It's, I mean, it, it just affects the use.
Because there are, I'm sorry, there are no height requirements that they have to meet with the structure, but that could be something that we could put in to the special conditions, is that correct?
That could be put in, yes.
Eric?
So, just to clarify that, there's nothing about this proposal that is bringing it to the council except that this use is not one of the listed uses by right? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Bill?
Yeah, I think I'm ready to have discussion. So, I'll move ordinance number 2017-10-059. Move approval of that ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion? Bill? Oh, did I see?
Well, I have, I have a hand, I don't know if Bill beat me.
I'll go.
We'll get you both.
Yeah, just, I mean, I think it's, the conditions added, or conditions recommended by the Plan Commission are good ones. About submitting the final site plans and developing in general conformance with the approved site plans and landscape plan. I can't think of anything necessarily I'd add. I'm still a little concerned about screening to the east, but it's still far, it's still far off as far as the site plan goes. There's still several hundred feet even to the border of their property. And then I, and then it looks like it's agricultural use for another several hundred feet after that, and there is some screening around that residential property that's up to the northeast. So, I, I can't think of any other conditions I would add.
Eric?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, to me, the last question I asked is really strongly determinative. There's, there's nothing about this project that's negative except that this use happened not to be on the list of uses by right. And, and so that's why, you know, we're having this hearing. And I don't see anything about this use as compared to the other uses that are on that list that really makes it uniquely a problem. And none of the objections to it have to do with this use being uniquely a problem. So, I think it would really be a stretch. I think we'd really be going out of our way to make life hard for, for these, for this proposed project to deny the special use permit.
Any other comments? Dennis?
Yeah, I kind of agree. We're talking about use here, and the use is compatible with everything we see across Lincoln, directly across Lincoln. I mean, I can understand perhaps how those who have agricultural properties and homes in the nearby area can see that suddenly now, in this instance, the industrial uses on Lincoln Avenue have jumped closer to their, to their own agricultural homes and properties. But by right, there's nothing that would stop that from happening. If it's not going to be today, it's going to be, you know, five years from now because of the zoning. It's, currently, it's agricultural, but it has, there is by right industrial usage here, so even though it's, in a, right now, resting as an agricultural property, it's not the future use that we have in our development plans.
Any other comments? Aaron?
Yeah, I don't think the, the question of why no comprehensive planning has been answered. I think the gentlemen have themselves spoken that it really wasn't their desire to even have that much land. They wanted the, enough land to do the business. And it just, it's bugging me a bit that we don't have an, an approach that says that we know that this land is going to be developed, or it's prime real estate for us to develop, knowing that we need to increase the, the tax base and everything and, and develop more business in Urbana. So, I am a little curious as to why we don't have a more comprehensive approach to the 47.5. But, but I'm supportive of what's being put in place. I certainly appreciate any of the concerns or the issues that have been raised by the, the folks who live in the area and some of the issues that have been raised, but I do think that the, what is being asked by the business owners or the proposal fits the criteria.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City council members, Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you for investing in Urbana.
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
Next up is ordinance number 2017-10-060, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for a planned unit development, 1404 South Lincoln Avenue, Pierre Moulin, Plan Case 2314-PUD-17. We have one member of the public who wishes to make a statement, Louise Cooney. Who's?
Mayor?
No.
Could you go ahead and read the other ordinance as well?
Okay. And related to this case is ordinance number 2017-10-061, an ordinance approving a final development plan for a planned unit development at the same address. She's went out, okay. Okay. Kevin?
Good evening, again.
Welcome back.
Okay. Okay, so this is a proposed development that is on the corner of Lincoln Avenue and Vermont Avenue. It's 1404 South Lincoln Avenue. It's better known as the Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority House. This is a local landmark. That was landmarked back in January of 2015, and this parcel is zoned. Let me pull up some exhibits. So, this parcel is zoned R7, which is a university residential zoning district. And I want to real quickly read the description of the R7 zoning district, so you can keep that in mind during this case. Okay, so the R7 University Residential District is intended to provide areas in proximity to the University of Illinois for dormitories and rooming houses, which are occupied primarily by students, to ensure the longevity of the agricultural character and use of these existing buildings, and to protect nearby low-density residential districts from incompatible developments. Now, this proposal is to, is to turn the former sorority house into an 18-unit apartment building with 40 residents. And in the R7 district, it's, you know, given its narrow focus, it does not allow multifamily residential by right, but it does allow residential planned unit development. So, that is what is being proposed today. In a related case, Mr. Moulin received a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission for all of the exterior work that would be required as part of this redevelopment proposal. That was heard on October 12th, and that was a unanimous vote to grant that certificate of appropriateness. Since in this case, there's a proposal to reuse a single building, and the application contains all of the required details for final planned unit development, we are doing a concurrent review of both the preliminary and final PUD applications at this time. On October 12th, after the Preservation Commission met, the Urbana Plan Commission held a public hearing on this case. And at that case, after some discussion about things like the, the unit mix, the layout of the building, the parking, landscaping, the air conditioning units, and the garbage enclosure, the Plan Commission voted five to zero in favor of granting approval with certain conditions that are listed in your memo. Or, sorry, they are not listed in your memo because the Plan Commission just came up with those, but I'll get to those later on. There was, there was some concern, let's see, regarding parking, and I know that Ms. Cooney is here, so she might, she might state some concerns that she had, but she, she voiced those at the Plan Commission as well. I'm not going to, to, you know, to speak for her, but there was some concern that granting one of the waivers in this case, which is reducing the parking from 23 spaces down to 19, would set some sort of precedent for future cases that might also occur in Urbana. And I just want to, I just want to, to state that in each of these cases, these are, these are taken on a case-by-case basis. So, if you grant, say, a parking waiver this time, that doesn't mean that, that next time you must also grant a parking waiver to somebody who is requesting a waiver at that time. Each site is unique, each case is unique, so don't, so I don't think there's worry that, that there would be some sort of a precedent or a slippery slope that is being granted if you grant, in this case, a waiver for reduced parking. Okay. That said, the proposed development, as I said, it'd be 18 units with 40 residents, and the, the original 1928 building and the 1963 addition, their exteriors would be restored and rehabbed, and the 1980s sunroom addition would be removed, and that's on the southeast corner of the building. The exterior of the building is mostly sound, and as I mentioned, would be repaired and restored, but the interior is, is in pretty poor condition and would need extensive repair and remodeling. As part of this proposal, the first floor of the building would be made handicap accessible, and there'd be access ramps. Let me pull up a, a site plan while I'm talking about it. I think I have some zoomed-in plans that are easier to see. There we go. Okay. So... Okay, so here's the site plan. Okay, so access ramps would be added here on the south of the building, and then over here on the west side of the building to make, to provide access to the existing entrances that are there. The formerly L-shaped parking lot on the west side of the site would be, or that would be taken away, and it would be replaced by a 17-space parking lot that you can see on the west side of the building. So, that would close the access that's currently off of Lincoln Avenue. And then the access down here on Vermont Avenue would be widened to, to accommodate, or to meet the zoning standards for that. Let's see. Garbage and recycling would be placed over on the east side of the building here. New fencing and landscaping would be added, added throughout in many areas to screen the parking, to screen the bike parking, and to screen some of the air conditioning units. And then a walkway would be built around the back of the building to provide residents with access to the concrete patio that's at the back. In addition, space for 20 bicycles would be installed down here, south of the 1963 addition. The proposed planned unit development would help meet quite a few of the goals and objectives from the 2005 Urbana Comprehensive Plan, and those are, are spelled out on page three of the staff memo. And also, with respect to the goals of the planned unit development ordinance, we, staff finds that the proposed PUD would be consistent with goals 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, and 9, and you can read each of those on page four of the staff memo. In addition, there are certain criteria that a planned unit development must meet before being considered, and there, and this proposal meets two of the four required criteria, those being conservation and unique development. Conservation because it would restore, rehab, and protect an Urbana local historic landmark, and a unique development because this would be a high-quality rehab project in an infill location. And it would also restore a unique historic resource and allow it to be used for decades to come. In terms of waivers, I've already mentioned a couple of those, but the applicant is requesting waivers for flexibility in a few areas. One is the required number of parking spaces. They're asking to reduce those from 23 to 19, or 83 percent of the number required. Second one is for some parking lot design in terms of the access drive. The access drive on the southeast part, which is only serving two parking spaces, they'd like to leave that at its, at its regular width, which zoning ordinance would require it to be 20 feet wide instead of 12 foot 2 inches. The, the parking spaces as drawn are, are not as long as, as the, as the zoning ordinance requires, but they've made accommodations for that. And, let's see. Oh, and then the final one is to allow parking in a required yard. And in addition to requiring parking in, in the yard, the Plan Commission was adding, adding conditions for the bicycle parking in the front yard, some air conditioning units that are also in a required yard there, and then for the garbage enclosure, which is in the required side yard. We feel, staff feels and Plan Commission, with their conditions, agreed that, that all of these waivers should, should be allowed. Okay, in terms of the criteria for approval of the planned unit development, I don't think I'll go, go through each of these. There are five criteria listed, listed in your memo, starting on page seven. But suffice it to say, we feel that the, that the proposed planned unit development meets the criteria for, for approval. And we also hosted a, or the applicant hosted an informational meeting for the neighborhood on September 25th at the Unitarian Universalis Church in West Urbana. And at least 15 people signed in, there may have been a few more at that meeting. But that, at that meeting, it was the applicant and, and his team shared information about the project, and overall, the, the response was very positive from the attendees, and no one voiced any opposition to the proposal. And to date, we have received no written correspondence expressing any concerns about the proposal. So, for each of these cases, the city council can approve the PUD. You can approve the PUD with any conditions, or you can deny the, the PUD. The recommendation that, that was made by the Plan Commission is to, as I said, it was 5-0 in favor of recommending approval of the planned unit development with two conditions. And that was the first one, that construction be in general conformance with the attached site plan and elevations. And then number two was they wanted to add conditions which had not been previously stated, and those would allow the AC units, garbage and recycling enclosure, and bike parking in required yards. And staff concurs with the Plan Commission's recommendation. And that concludes my report, and I can take questions. I know the, the applicant and, and his architects are here as well, if you have more specific questions.
Any questions for staff? Bill?
Thanks, Kevin. I do have one question about...
I do have one question about the, the drive entrance to the two parking spaces. I don't have a problem with two parking spaces using a narrow drive, but the garbage is back there too and the garbage trucks coming and going to, to back into that narrow space. I know Mary Alice, are you still with us?
Yeah.
Right across the street from Mary Alice Wu's house, there's an apartment building on Nevada Street that has a narrow driveway that goes up to a park, to a garbage dumpster. And there is like three or four feet of mud on the corner of that driveway just continuously for, for years. They just can't seem to hit the driveway. So it's, it's, it's on the, it's, you know, it's just that first radius. So what I would wonder is, would it be possible to have like a wide-mouthed driveway there with bigger radius so that they'd be easier to get up to the, once they got past the sidewalk, I think they're straightened out by then and they can go straight back, but it's just that initial part getting, you know, getting their tires over there, I guess.
So a couple of points to, to your question and then maybe I'll get to the actual question, which ones, can they do that? So if you notice here, there's an existing streetlight. I'm not sure how close they can get to that existing streetlight without having to move it, probably at, at decent cost. So I think they prefer not to have to do that, but I think maybe a better point is that the applicant did contact his potential future waste hauler and, and described the situation and asked if it would be an issue for, for their hauling and they said there would be no issue with the driveway of that width. And then, okay, your question was, could they do a wide-mouth driveway? I think that's probably an engineering question, so I could defer to, to Bill Gray on that or perhaps to the applicant's architects. But I think, so 12 feet, 2 inches, I'm guessing that's wider than the driveway at the place that you're talking about because we only require nine feet for, well, is that, you said that's an apartment building though, right?
It's an apartment building. I didn't measure it. I don't know how wide it is.
Yeah.
It looked like 10 to 12 feet to me, but I don't know.
Okay. Well, I will refrain from further speculating about the driveway that I haven't seen.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. I did have one member of the public who wished to comment. Louise?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Louise Cooney. I live at 801 West Indiana and I own the historic property there. So I'm going to make this very brief because of the hour. First of all, I'd like to tell you that this has my unwavering support. This is by far the best use of this property, which has been a difficult property for a number of years. And I think we are very fortunate not only to have such a good plan, but to be reassured that we have a neighbor and a neighbor that has restored other historic properties in the past. And as far as I know, none of our neighbors are opposing this in any way and I think I'm the only person here from Woonah. So again, complete support. I would say however, and I would ask the council to consider for future cases, when we don't get so lucky, when we don't have a resident of Urbana that is willing to pour a lot of money and I imagine quite a bit of risk into a project like this, to ask ourselves if we have the right process in place for evaluating this type of plan. I'm a process person. I work in the healthcare, hospital industry. I work for the Joint Commission. We have strict processes on everything. We don't want a hospital surveyor going in one hospital and saying one thing and somebody else going in another hospital and saying another thing. So my question for you for perhaps discussion now or at a, at a future meeting when you deem that you have time, is do we have the right process in place for determining when we should be looking for zoning variance or zoning change and when we should be looking at a PUD? I think that's difficult for the public to understand. Lori has tried her best to explain it to me, but I think that the, the line between that could be a little fuzzy. And that concerns people in Woonah, particularly, particularly people that live like me, very close to Lincoln Avenue. Those properties along there, the, the Greek houses are very attractive to developers. One has purchased one and we are concerned about the way this will be evaluated the next time. So perhaps taking a look at how to differentiate those two processes, which one to use at which point in time, and then taking a look at the PUD process. When I looked at the criteria for that, I think that a lot of judgment is possible on those criteria. And to me, not being familiar with this type of a business, being familiar with the hospital business, I would wonder, what is the best practice for that? Is there any national recommendations as to how to make that process a little tighter so that less judgment is, is available? In this case, it's clear. In the next case, it may not be clear at all. And then finally, I'd like to say that in Woonah, the thing that I'm hearing when I'm discussing this type of a project with neighbors is that we really count on the Lincoln-Bucy Corridor Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, and other city plans to protect us. In this case, that's going to work and I would just ask you to make sure that in future cases, you consider those as well because people have made decisions as to whether to invest, purchase properties or invest in them based on those plans and we consider them, while perhaps not a legal contract, to be somewhat of a contract with the community as to what the city intends. Thank you.
Thank you. Council discussion?
I guess let's get a motion, motion on the table first.
Yeah, do you want? Okay, I'll do the first one.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2017-10-060, approving a preliminary development plan for planned unit development, 1404 South Lincoln Avenue, planning case as indicated. So I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill. Discussion? Was that Mary Alice?
No, I'm sorry. That's my bad phone.
Dennis?
Yeah. You know, when, when I saw this come up and I saw that the ZTA Sorority House had survived two attempts for landmarking, which were on the edge of disaster, and yet this building ended up, instead of being one that nobody could approve of, actually purchasing and developing, it looked like it was going to be just a ruin, a lost cause. It comes back from the grave almost to become exactly what we always hoped this could be, a redeveloped, saved, historic, valuable building that contributes to the quality of our neighborhood in the university area. This really excites me that, that the hopes of the Historic Preservation Commission could be realized in such a nice way. It seems to not have the, have raised any concerns from the neighborhood or the, the community in general. It seems like a really, real good win. It looks like the interior will be modified to accommodate modern usage and yet the historic significance of the outside is being preserved, so I think it's a wonderful thing.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm supporting this too and I think it's, it's really remarkable that someone, obviously someone, an outside developer probably would require a greater return on investment, lower risk in order to do something like this. So we have, in this case, a more altruistic investor who lives in the area and is probably less concerned about, you know, the percentage return and the, and the risk and hopefully you can at least get some return. But I think it's rare, so it's, it's hard to expect that in every case, but it's really great that it's working out in this case. As far as the parking exemption goes, I think in the planned unit developments, we always try, well, I've only done two or three, actually that last one never even made it to council, but the, the couple that we have done, we've always had a trade-off between what is being offered by the developer and what we're given. So in this case, obviously, the rescue of a historic property and reuse without, you know, without losing that is a big, is a big plus and definitely worth a few parking spaces and some of the other asks. In other cases where they're just offering, you know, better materials for the building, maybe some underground parking, more screening, then it is a little bit more of a judgment issue and I don't know if you can quantify that. It's, it's, I think it's just, you have to consider it on a case-by-case basis. But, you know, we listen to everybody's arguments in those cases and try to see it from both So yeah, I think, I would like the developer and staff to look at that potential for a wide-mouthed driveway or something like that to, to prevent that type of problem from occurring. And I'm, I'm excited about the interior designs. I think there's some really unique opportunities for layouts of apartments that would be, you know, just, there's nothing else like it on campus. So I think it could attract not only grad students and vet med students because they'd be close to vet med campus and potentially more professional, young professionals that are associated with U of I or even not, but people that just want, you know, a nice, unique apartment. So the only other thing I want to mention is I already mentioned it to the developers, I think that there's, would be potential for ground source heat pump for this building instead of having all the outdoor, outdoor, what do you call them, the condenser units from the air conditioners making the noise all around. There is parking lot space. I don't know how many wells it would take. I don't know what, what kind of load it would require, but I hope you can look into that and it would definitely drive up the initial costs, but if you plan to include utilities, I think last time I talked with them, they were thinking about including utilities in the rent, it would probably have a payback period that would, that would allow you to do that. Maybe even you could finance that. Thank you.
Any further comments?
This is so great. It gives me hope that maybe the hotel in my lifetime.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zaman.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2017-10-061. Same address and it's an ordinance approving a final development plan.
I'll make a motion that we adopt it or accept it.
Okay. Moved by Dennis.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zaman.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes and ZTA will become Chateau Normand. Thank you very much. Next up is ordinance numbers 2017-10-062, which is an ordinance approving a subdivision ordinance waiver regarding stormwater management at 407 North Maple Street, plan case number
So the item before you is to request some flexibility from our subdivision and land development code specifically for the lot at the corner of Maple and University, just east of the Carter's Furniture, which is here, so a little northeast. What's proposed here is a little retail strip center. What they are asking is for some relief from our requirement to provide stormwater detention on-site. The reason they're requesting that is because this is the Boneyard Creek. So what they're asking to do is to put their stormwater directly into a pipe that is approximately in this location so that it can drain directly into the boneyard. The reason that's actually a good idea is to get that water off the site right away so that their, the peak flow of the boneyard is not elevated as a result of the site. Bill can correct me. It's late, I'm sorry. But in essence, it's a good thing to actually not have them detain the water and hold it up. The idea is it should get to the boneyard as soon as possible so that it'll go downstream faster and allow some more capacity for the other sites that do have detention. So they do need a waiver from that requirement and that is why we're here tonight. I believe the engineer is still back there and can answer any questions or I can answer any questions too.
Jared?
Just curious, there is to why we may or may not have any language in the ordinance that pertains to the proximity of two boneyard? Do we have that in there? I didn't get a chance to, to look over the ordinance prior to coming tonight. Just curious why a place that's so obviously right there and should so obviously just have a pipe right into it, doesn't already have some language?
Oh, I'm sorry, not in the ordinance that you're considering this evening.
No, no, yes, I just mean in our...
That's a good question. We're actually, as part of our revision to the subdivision ordinance and land development code, we are going to suggest that if you're within a certain approximation of, of a creek that you should be able to put it in directly so that we don't have to come back to you with this very good idea.
Right. Just curious. Thanks.
Bill?
Is it in the creekway? The Boneyard Creekway?
Yes, so they will need a Boneyard Creekway permit.
They do need a permit?
Yeah.
Okay. I know, or at least looking from the maps, the 100-year floodplain seems to really expand on the south side of university there. It's almost like there's a choke point there going under university. So it seems like once it gets up to, once the water got up to the top of the culvert there, anything else you're putting into it will contribute to additional flooding, but by that point, you've probably already got water in the, in the Vine Street Viaduct anyway. You know, this is a pretty small piece of property and 99% of the time, it's going to be flowing into the creek before it gets up to the top of the culvert, so I don't see any reason to, to deny it.
Any other comments? Dennis?
I couldn't make a motion.
That would be great.
All right. I move, I moved to be adopt ordinance 2017-10-062, approving a subdivision ordinance waiver regarding stormwater management at 407 North Maple Street, planning case 2319-S17.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zaman.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu? Mary Alice?
Past your bedtime.
Mary Alice Wu?
Are you there? I think she pressed the fart plaster.
Apparently. We must have lost her. Well, that ordinance passes and I would, I would just like to thank the staff of the Community Development Department. They, this has been a very, very busy time for them and they've had three large cases to manage and it's, I very much appreciate the time and effort and planning that went into this, so thank you. Last item on the agenda are, is the appointment of a vice chair to the Sustainability Advisory Commission. This is one of the commissions where we're required to appoint a vice chair, so I'm appointing Elizabeth Mischeski. She's currently a member of the commission.
Okay, I'll second your motion or the appointment.
Well, I'd appreciate a motion.
Oh, okay. It's all right. I'll make that motion that we, we accept the appointment as indicated.
I'll second that.
Made by Dennis, seconded by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, that motion passes. And with no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.